...trumping up a problem for the association. But here, the board chairman and the board members have said that the opposite is the case. The last time the board spoke with us, with these premises at the other end, the chairman was initiating peace processes, so some of us are aware of that. I think they just wanted, they just wanted to be controversial. But the real issue is the question, can you give us an evidence that you have ever written to the NECOM? Thank you.
To the general of the press for that question, yes. There is proof, and there are proofs. The fact that we don't go to press does not mean we don't have the tenets of communication. I can tell you freely that, I document in my car side. I can look for more than five, six, seven, eight different letters with different dates to them. Lovely letters. We still have proofs that you, that when you answer that, or you ask us, it's for the answer. You know, when somebody want to do something, or as a father, you are giving the name of your child. You always allow that name to remain in your stomach. Until the eighth day, when the child be christened. So I will make document available before the president dismisses.
The secretary of board has said, as per the reconciliation meeting. We've been to several reconciliation meeting. Even one, we heard it at Protea Hotel at Maryland. We are, all of us were present, even Tony Iju and all the national, the ex-NECOM officers were present. Their lawyer was a son, he was sharing the meeting with our own lawyers, who are junior lawyers. So when he now came to Tony Iju to speak, so that we can resolve the issue. He now acted drama. The president, he said, yeah, 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 I need water, 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 water. Mukaila, Mukaila now asked any man to bring water to him. They brought water to him, he drank, he drank. He said he cannot stay in this meeting. What happened? He got a call that should leave that meeting from Peter Obi. So he was acting, and that is how the meeting ended. The next one was called at Santiago Hotel. He wrote the letter. He wrote the letter inviting Amadibo Enough. So he wrote the letter again, inviting all the duty members, eight of us for a meeting at the Santiago Hotel. Everybody came from Port-au-Prince, Abuja, eight of us were at that meeting. The next thing we saw, we are in Tony Iju. It was a fan at home that now was sharing the meeting. Where is Tony Iju? At the city hospital. It's Tony Iju that invited, I know that people came from Port-au-Prince and Abuja for this meeting. It was going to be, anybody can be sick. Then it is, it is costly demand that you just inform your colleagues that, yet to make sure the hospital light could not be able to pump. Then the national, you are not, you are not the president, we want to speak with our president, not you. Then they now started sending photographs of where I sat down in his room. They were putting this, the guy is an actor, that is what I'm saying.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Your question is two, sorry, I only answered only one. You are saying probably, where are the problems? Where not? I want, I want you to be, to be on record that we have gone to these various places and go to this state for reconciliation. We have got AIG Maritime. We have got the EMCC in Abuja. We sponsor ourselves individually through our food Abuja for this reconciliation. And it was advised, a leader supposed to accommodate it, go back. We have got to AIG Alagbo. We have got to Commissioner of Police Negosia. Name it. So if you don't have, if you don't have the peace in our mind, we cannot decide to go over to Akon. That answer your other actual question. Thank you.
I test, if I use the word magnanimous. He said he has been once, magnanimous enough, more than enough, to make peace moves without any response from you. But it's good when you have a quest to get the truth and you get it. I want to thank God because I got the truth, the life you said just today. And so God has other side of the truth today as well. However, I have a question. That question is this, should the national, sustain the national president and his team come up tomorrow with an apology? Categoryally, what are you going to do? Are you going to carry on with your decision or do it yourself? Thank you.
Great professional. Great America.
Yes, actually, I, because I used to, I need to use this opportunity to say that I would be living in a shopware because I, my flight is due in a shopware. But I actually was waiting for one question. But I know that maybe you people want to ask it. The idea, or that the story that I've been making around, making around is that we have been taking them to several courts, something. First, let it be known that the essence of court is for resolution to come about. I have it on record that when something that is not right is done, instead of resorting to self-help, you head to court. I know that Godfather heads to court most of the time to have it resolved. Now, but the truth now is that we did not start taking them to court. All that we have gone to has been reaction for what they did. The first issue of court entering into this segment of whatever crisis that ANALCA is having now was started by them. When they all conspired and sent Peter Ogeobi. Why we need to put that Oge is to differentiate him from the eminent Peter Obi of the former governor. Because most of them when you say Peter Obi, they say ah. So is Peter Ogeobi? The girl lost her son Peter Ogeobi. He went to court with their own understanding to declare us impostors. So every other thing about court was a reaction to that. And we decided that that is the only way we can, that a civilist person reacts to issue. When somebody has taken you to court, accusing you of something, you go to court and prove yourself. And if in the process of proving yourself, the man has shot himself in the leg, it's not going to be your problem. Now to the question that was asked, we are all for peace. One of the reasons why we have not been following them the way they have been going is that we fear it will destroy the image of ANALCA. And so that is why we have not been agreeing to dance in the marketplace, just like the chairman has said, with them. So if they come back to their senses, what the heck? We want a peaceful ANALCA. The association was created to provide enabling environment for licensed customer agents to be able to do their business successfully. And they cannot do it under this atmosphere of rank-up. And so that's why we too have been restrained in our reaction. And we are hoping that common sense will prevail. However, I'm not preempting any person, but then, when people behave the way they behave like you had, they go about saying that they have been magnanimous, they have done this, while there is no evidence of whatever they have done to ensure that peace in ANALCA. On our own path, we can go along with them. We are very ready. Let the right thing be done, and we move on. So that question is simple. Yes, we are ready to forgive them, but of course, they will see no more. Thank you.
I write for keeping position in this paper. My senior colleague, Abashawee, has my first and second question. But the question I want to ask is that, of course, there's no being saying that you've always been on the path of standing by the court's judgment. But the thing that you, going forward, you may elect or appoint new national executive council. Don't you think this will also constitute the legality that you also said the other party have been doing? And also, do you think that electing or appointing new NECOM is in your jurisdiction to do?
Questions over. Let the last question, that I will take over. Gentlemen of the press. Let me, let me start reacting from the second question that somebody asked. The first question has been taken care of in terms of what are the proofs that were made to his good initiative. But let me follow up that with, there is another imbalance. Say, cut down history, Apaga. You got come and here. Let me, let me interpret. You want to bathe, you pour water on your body, then suddenly, your hand page got removed. There must be something behind that. What am I saying in essence is this? Tony Iju as the former national president. If I were to be in his shoes, this is not the first crisis we'll be having in ANALCA. We had a crisis before Prince Olajuwonashi who came in. And he made moves to reconcile everybody. And that was why he was able to succeed as the national president. For everybody who was, or any normal person, and under normal circumstance, who is interested in having a good, truly good right in his administration, strive hard to make peace with all the members. What is the genesis of all this? Let me come over, come over again. Before the NECOM election, the East, the eastern zone, and of which I am a member, decided we were going to support Tony Iju as the president. The western zone decided to support Emeliki as the president. Eventually, Tony Iju won with three votes. That wasn't a big margin, and that was a popular decision of all the members. That was just a small margin. And that was, so I told him that you needed to work hard to reconcile everybody. But rather than doing that, in his own, in his own ignorance, let me put it that way, decided to go on verbatim, that for those who didn't support him to become the president, he was going to work against them. And that is the essence of the beginning of what we are seeing in the West. He made moves, while we were talking of reconciliation within ourselves, he made moves to remove the charter chairmen and their executives in the West. And when the agenda was over, I personally made moves towards him. Let us seize this opportunity to conduct another election for those who are in the West, so that we can move forward from there. But rather than taking it from there, he refused, and he decided to conduct parallel election in the midnight for all the other chapters. And the result of what we are seeing is that just some weeks back, just some weeks back, the Tinkan chapter, the secular was vandalized by Uju Akitoi. One of the so-called elected chairman and his own group. They vandalized the secular, went away with the boss, the association boss, and some other properties. Then what followed again, they went ahead to write petition to the AIG Alagbo that some of the members wanted to kill them. Some of the members wanted to kidnap Tony Iju. And Alagbo went ahead to raid our members at PCML, at Tinkan, and Apapa. They arrested them and detained them at Alagbo. But however, at the end of the day, when the AIG got to realize the truth, he released our members and told him, go and initiate peace within your association. Has he said, has he done anything? So those are, that is, that is one of the issues that we are talking about in terms of what we have made, the effort we have made to reach out on the peaceful ground. Then again, one of the, the so-called board members that they said they have elected was Ochukwala. I'm sure some of you, the journalists, know, you read it in the, in the Maritime News very recently, that he was trying to make move for peaceful resolution. And as soon as with that was coming up, I personally was trying to take him serious. I was discussing with him, why some of us said, don't believe in this man, he's a liar. And few weeks, few weeks after, it was part of those who said, we are inaugurating another board. When you say you want to make peace, will you go ahead to be on one side?
No.
Four days after. So the first thing he did was just to go to the press first, go and try to make peace. Was you go to the press or make noise over the fact that he wanted to make peace? And now, finally, your question. You said, do we have constitutional responsibility? You see, the board is the apex organ in ANALCA. And it is the board where there is crisis, in NECOM or anywhere, the board takes over the administration of ANALCA. The constitution is quite clear about that. So also, it is normal. And the board has the constitutional responsibility to appoint acting national executives where there is lack of like, we are having it today. And that is the essence of it. Thank you very much.
Finally, finally, is there any, just, let me, it's, of course, to me, just now that the suspended NECOM recently appointed, it's, of course, to me, just now that the suspended NECOM recently appointed the Board of Trustee. And they said the chairman is Tywu Afalabi. I don't know if this president guilty of being able to reach out to Tywu Afalabi, which we believe is a gentleman, as to, you know, letting know some of the crisis. I want to believe he doesn't know what has transpired so far in the association. What is this president guilty doing to reach out to him and to let him know some of these things that is happening, perhaps, so that he himself will be able to know and maybe step down?
Tywu Afalabi is a respected individual in our industry. He's the chairman of Cifax Group. He's a gentleman, and somebody we all have respect for. The question I want to pass back to you, if you notice, in all the outings in behalf of him, have you seen Tywu Afalabi there? So anybody can decide to use anybody's name. That's what we are, we believe from our own side. That as long as Tywu Afalabi has not come out to be part of them in any of the public outing, or to come out to say it, that he is part of them, then we want to believe that they are just using his name. That's one aspect of it. Secondly, we have taken time to write to Tywu Afalabi personally. And this is a copy of the letter, that this is what we have seen going on, or we have heard going on. But we want to warn you ahead that it is contemptuous to do that because it is against the court order. And I believe that he is aware of that, and is not going to walk against the court order. He has the interest of ANALCA at hand, from what we have seen so far, and we believe he's not going to walk against ANALCA. That is of Tywu Afalabi. For the so-called amended constitution, you see, we have a process. Ojekba, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
We have a process where we want to amend constitution in ANALCA. You don't just go to AGM and say you have amended constitution by way of, what a pack way of doing things. We are not agreed, and ANALCA cannot descend to that level. So if somebody goes, I mean, gets to the so-called AGM and say, section two, 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 the one we have, the section one of, I mean, we have decided to amend the turn of the charter chairmen from now, become four, instead of three years. Can anybody say yes or no? And so some rabble rousers say yes. That is null and void. Besides that, when you constitute an AGM or you constitute NECOM, who are, who are supposed to be part of it? Do we have constituted NECOM? We don't have a president as it is today. The president and his executive are suspension, so they cannot come for any AGM to be able to amend any constitution in ANALCA. So the concern they are carrying about as amended is not the one that is with corporate affairs recognition today. The one we are having is the one we use in swearing Tony Iju himself. The one we have is the one that's already amended when Prince Olajuwonashi who was the president. And the one that is the one the law still recognizes, it recognizes in corporate affairs. So whatever they are carrying about is shit, is dust paper. That is the answer to that question. Thank you. Asubek's publishing company work, I want to thank my colleagues. This is because some of us have been passionate, very worried, concerned about what is happening in ANALCA. I have grown into this industry to know the rule, to appreciate the rule of ANALCA. And right from the days of Kamba, we know that when ANALCA sneezes, everywhere they shake. And we are seeing a lot of things going on in the industry. Look at the Nigerian customs example, I mean, the customs service for example. Under Amida, the consumer has been standardized. And because ANALCA is, appears not to be speaking in one voice, the man is just doing anything he likes. I don't even know when the last a seat of customs visited the premier port of Anapaka. He doesn't care. For as long as Mr. President is on the seat, he knows that he's going to be there. He doesn't care what pains the ANALCA or the agents are going through. So what I'm trying to say very clearly is that we are so passionate about this association as a maritime journalist. And people have been asking me, oh, Asubek, what is your interest in this ANALCA matter? Or are you a claim agent? I said, I am a stakeholder in this industry. And then some others will come, oh, why are you taking sides? I said, are you asking me, a citizen of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, a stakeholder in the industry, that I should not know the right from wrong? I should not say what is right and project what is wrong? Our dear sister in CNN, Krista Amambu, said, if you are a journalist, and you refuse, you fail to take sides in an issue, then you are not worth your socks. And so, this is an issue in which we know that by the time ANALCA comes together and speaks in one, and that is the most important, you know, my interest is that ANALCA should come together and speak in one voice. It is not about Mustafa, it is not about Tony Iju. So I want to use this opportunity to thank my colleagues, members of the fourth estate of the ring, for not align themselves to be cowed as far as this issue is concerned by being objective, reporting the truth. I know some of them will not show up here, because when they see that Tony Iju, yes, that they are here. Oh, you are on my side, why did you attend the press conference? A journalist is a journalist. You are go, you are supposed to report both sides of the issue. But that does not stop you also in your analysis from saying, look, this is right, this is wrong. As far as this matter is concerned, Asubek, anybody can go to places, I've taken sides, I'm on the side of truth. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, thank you very much. We just have one last one before the two of them.
Great America.
Great America.
Um, I want to thank the Godfather for that wonderful speech. I know Asbeck, so many years back. Even I was coming up as the chairman of Premier Port. And I became his zona coordinator. I've known Asbeck as very fearless gentleman. When he speaks, everybody listen to him. Thank you very much. I, I want to thank most of our chapter members back here for your concern towards ANALCA. Today, I am standing here as a human being. ANALCA made me what I am. I was the only agent that was given a good medal at Cassina Conference. A passenger places on my shoulder, a habit as a honorary steward customer officer. I will be the last person that will destroy the house that shattered me when I was born. I said the Yoruba man came for eight years. I traveled to sincere countries during Shitu. We are going for training seminars. I was very, very close to late speaker there. ANALCA made me. It's not about money, it's about the name. I met my brother Tony Iju, I said, come. The election have come and gone. No Yoruba man contested, it is between two brothers. And the vote was three votes, we know how it went. Politics is about interest. Yes. I was here, the vote was counted, somebody touched the voting part, ink. He was counting, two, three, reported our vote. We saw it. But that is history for another day. I'm a Yoruba man, I play politics with Yorubas as far as ANALCA is concerned until I die. Politics is about interest. There was some Yorubas that were following as a key word. There was some Yorubos that were following that were the one, I do it too. It's about interest. It's not a religion, he said I must stand there, but it's about your interest. After this, I beat the whole Yoruba. I went to Tony Iju, all the whole people in the West, I say we have come to pay a legend to you. A reverend father from Sokoto Daisies from Kaba, Fatakuka came to pray for us for four hours. After three months, Tony left us, far in talk, said they give order from left to right. I suspend this one, I remove this one. Crisis that we didn't put for him, he came in, little inola, was pursuing, we supported. All this crisis, I continued talking to my brother. I said today, that same Yoruba man cannot manage Nigeria, what happened? under eight years four years we have four senate presidents it's a record and some people that are supporting the senate president some of them Yorubas ibos and houses about their interest but today the history is here that they cannot manage the affair of the country within four years they produce four senate presidents I said Tony please I beg you in the name of God let us save the ibos so that the second time I had the ibos completed I did that before the man I have never worked against him I have never tried people to destroy Anaka that built me but somebody came saying he is going to be the last president for God God will never permit that I want to give back to Anaka I'm not going to destroy the bridge that I cross and beg somebody I want the prayers that are here please be reporting objectively be reporting objectively I was detained I had an accident I was detained I slept in the labo I drive home my sister died I was not here I get back I had a pit car to police station I went there they pointed at me I was detained
great professionals let me with the permission of my chairman sir let me first of all thank the Godfather the Asubek I remember our eighties when we are trying to pull the maritime together the like of Bola G Friday and Co I think started from my office in Apapa the rules we are playing maritime God Almighty will pay you back the millions let me go further to thank all the press that decided to stand by the truth like I said today is not speech making day today is a day that we thank God and let me thank all the press members that asked a constructive question to lead to a further explanation yes this is a chairman I'm sorry to say is a complete gentleman in the early days when we ask because of visa not to come to the port he would not come am I communicating but that was there but the chairman's time he has moved every one of us to be gentleman like mine so that things will go smoothly what they want us to do in Lagos we are not going to do it because I can tell you from history that we have we have lost souls Anaka issue is always during the election take your path and the problem with this country is that nobody's decided to accept anything from God our chairman here today is somebody that we all give our respect to such a man I thank you my wife chairman the Attakata so the fact of the case is that out of the eight I pray that the soul of Sunny C2 will rest in peace out of seven remaining five is here alive if anybody sees a violation and score five over seven is a distinction if anybody does not know let them realize that we are the truth and we stand by the truth I thank all the Zona Cozneto they might have got an accident because of Anaka and that was when he was contesting Apapa port we were in the police station for thirty-two times he said oh Peter okay always put okay there because a number of doctors Peter Bill I thank you I found his honor at the second of his own though by face of the law they are suspended but to us they are not because we are still working together can you please clap for them please all the gentlemen that will put a place in Lagos are still releasing today so if anybody asks any question in the western zone I said to me there's no crisis nobody but the Yoruba can take any part of the chapters that this our chairman inaugurated the chairman so I don't want anybody to deceive anybody today I've said if that we have time to talk about Anaka we'll be here till evening I thank all the chairmen from our port in western zone and some few people in Potacot who are still giving us telephone calls underneath the table because of the fear of unknown God will help them I would say that one I thank all our task forces people giving the peace in the port making sure that you are listening to the order of the board no violence I thank you all I thank the two people that have come this event the CBN of Anaka the Joe Sonny please let me put out the word for you fire us in two body I thank you Lagos is Wazobea we are living every single of the country Lagos and we are operating abroaders I thank you all for coming and I pray that by the end of the day there is a light at the end of the tunnel that's the hero the woman daddy goes to park down she told me said daddy give me opportunity to slap I said no don't slap because I learned that if in Lagos somebody can come and stand up and said one slap is five thousand euro and we can slap twenty times in a day and collect twenty thousand euro I want to before I land off I want to somebody to stand up all your labor will not be empty to the chairman my chairmats are sorry John of Opiki the tank Cassina said we who were arrested that is true on that day two policemen came to my house and I told them what is the problem they said we are needed at Alabo I followed them at that part of the day I asked people to go and check around the police station area I discovered that our friends who are supposed to be our friends turned enemy are surrounding the whole area and I know on that day it would not be safe for us to be released and I told the police I'm a leader prepare yourself to accommodate all of us and I said I'm not going home and I stayed with them there the following day the police need food to talk to us hopefully there are some cloth when you wash it you don't put it in the sun when you wash that cloth you spread it inside your room I hope you understand what I'm saying there are so many things behind like I said earlier when I was making my show speech justice can be delayed but justice can never be denied I thank you all for coming I thank our top forces all our task forces our ladies in the house the reporter the photoshop man fancy is a photograph of Tony is a photograph of Mustafa is a photograph of everybody so I thank you all I pray that when I give back to our friends of this God Almighty will bless you all my chairman wants more thank you sir the Lord bless you all
in peace we gathered in peace we are going to disperse and in peace and joy we meet our loved ones at home may the Lord leads you home
I think it's better to go the open
G2
alright the first question is that I would like to have do you think all these issues has affected your future in the board
definitely definitely it has affected your future in the board just like what we said by the press conference was going on a lot of guys are actually suffering because there are no one to be able to speak for the agents Anaka over the years has always championed the cause of objects in the maritime industry the bearing of objects has already been our official but it's unfortunate today that we don't have consequences to be able to speak for our business and that's what we have in our decisions either the shipping army toy I mean toy with us here and there the terminal operators talk toy with us here and there even the transporters they deal with us in the house but I believe within a short time
if you had to give a figure to how much the current lack of trade facilitation is affecting your members how what's your estimate
it's like it's like the it has I mean gone down to like thirty percent downward like thirty percent downward the trade facilitation of course we can say it by way of words but it's not actually it's not actually there because today you are not too sure when you start a job the process of the job the one you are stretch I mean like within a week they should be able to bring out the container but today you start the process of a job in the next moment you are still you are not too sure of it and that is not trade facilitation there are queries everywhere here and there I mean queries that are unfounded queries that are unfounded so those are the issues that we are talking about that need to address and not until when we come together and see ourselves as one on the scheme of this in the maritime industry we will continue to have here and there and that is the essence of this organization need to come together
are you also worried about the lack of stakeholders engagement by the current general
yeah one thing we need to quite understand that the current controller general of customs you are having is not a seasoned official he has never been part of customs he I mean the president brought him and that's why we have seen what we have seen from him so we can't really blame him I mean he is there but in the reasons of it he doesn't know the nitty gritty of the customs operations if he stays there the next I mean one decade he may never understand the world with so unlike where you are punished a seasoned official who has gone over the ranks in the job who knows the nitty gritty of the job and who we can easily get in touch with even there are issues when there are changes in the customs today you really get in touch with them to get our own feelings they don't get feedback from us the last time we ever I mean we have ever seen the customs controller general in the future